Came all the way from DC?
I'm from Arkansas, former sheriff and journalist.
You look like I've never been to Arkansas.
I'm mainly with the Arkansas Project, which is a branch of Heritage.
I'm not a Republican, I'm just gonna take that for me. I'm just gonna sit right here and get it.
Okay. Take this back.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Want to start with questions?
I guess for different people, the tour that you're doing in Arkansas, how many cities do you organize? Why are you gonna start out?
So we've got nine cities, right?
Yeah, nine cities in the next two weeks.
I think they're all in different states. And while it's a critical time with this issue, Republicans were given the majority in the House in 2010, primarily on the promise that they would do everything they could to stop Obamacare. And while there have been some symbolic votes, they continue to fund it, to turn into billions of dollars. And as we get closer to the final deadline, which is January 1st, and this October 1st is when the sign-up happens, so many of the flaws in this bill are coming out. And the President has had to pick winners and losers in a lot of ways by giving waivers to, whether it be Congress, a year's delay on the employer mandate. It's just becoming increasingly unfair, unworkable. And now maybe that last offer, at least it's the last best chance to stop it, because by this time next year, you'll have tens of millions of Americans signed up for it, and many would have lost their employer insurance. It's not something they can go back to. And so this is an urgent time to stop what we think is a very destructive law. So we want to get people engaged. It's their right, their First Amendment right, to petition Congress for redress of grievances. And we're finding all over the country that a majority of Americans, and growing, want this bill stopped. So that's what we're here to tell them, that they can't stop it. If they call their senator, if they get engaged, what we want is for Washington to hear loudly from across America that they want this thing stopped. And our strategy really just comes from our knowledge of how the Congress works. Republicans may just control one-third of the government, but constitutionally, they control the purse strings. And if they fund the government, which we're encouraging them to do, fund all aspects of the government, except not to fund Obamacare, that is something the President will have to deal with. So that's what we're doing. Would you want to end it?
No, I think that was perfect. We're going to nine cities in the next two weeks. And they were chosen as parts of the country that we think there's members of Congress who should be on to a defunding. And that we'd love to see them too, glad to be here. Head from here to Dallas and then go to Florida.
The funds, that strategy, you know, completely claiming this to be a bit of a negotiation, that there was definitely a split with the Republicans, and members here on board saying this is counterproductive. I guess, what do you think about that disagreement? The idea that Republicans would be blamed for a shutdown if it came to that?
Well, there's a risk. Certainly, they will be blamed if they don't get on the offense and tell Americans what we're doing. Because if they pass a bill when they get back in September, and they should have done before they left, which funds the government, and then they go out and say, "We funded the government, Mr. President. It's your decision whether or not to accept that funding or to close the government down." I think it's an argument we can win. The President's popularity is slipping. The popularity of the bill is slipping every day. Increasingly, we're hearing about, today it was a slush fund for Planned Parenthood to promote the bill. I wonder what they're after. So, yeah, I think even folks who've said they didn't agree with the defunding strategy are coming around to that. Paul Williams said, I think it was today or over the weekend, that he thinks the House should pass a funding bill that funds the government but not Obamacare. So I think that's what we expect to happen when they get back.
Jason Hall with Freedom's Voice, Dunham Fort Smith. According to Constitution, Article 1, Section 7, it talks about how the taxes are to arise in the House of Representatives instead of the Senate, and that the Supreme Court has declared that this is a tax. How is that gonna... Is there any way to work with that as far as the Senate, and everything happened in the Senate rather than the House of Representatives? It originated in the Senate, I should say, rather than the House of Representatives.
Well, as we've seen, the House can pass a repeal, they can pass a change in the tax, but the Senate can't ignore. But a funding bill, they have to act on, or the government begins to slow down. And the idea of a shutdown is really not real. Social Security, Medicare, all the budget, they continue to get paid, so do a lot of the central aspect of the military. But the only way, and I think everyone who's been in Congress for over a year knows, the only way to stop this bill is not to fund it. Congress has the latitude to write any appropriation bill that disallows funding for specific things. We do it all the time. It can be mandatory spending. But if it was a tax bill, it would have to be passed by the Senate too in order to become law. So this is the only point of leverage that Republicans have if they're serious about stopping Obamacare.
And the issue that you raised with Obamacare is one of the... Currently, people are trying to take to the courts, trying to get up to the Supreme Court. It's a valid one, it's one of many problems with how Obamacare was passed. This was legislation that was passed first on Christmas Eve. It was one that was ultimately passed using reconciliation. And the issue that you raise is one that's currently being taken to the courts, and that's an effort that we applaud.
Have you worried at all at all, as sort of drag on for a minute, while we're just saying, let's go ahead and fund another forty? Are you wondering, are you worried about this maybe doing damage to the party and the message you're trying to get out?
What we're worried about is the damage that's gonna be done to the country. And this idea we hear from some Republicans and strategists, that let's let this be implemented, and then Americans will see just how bad it is, and that'll help them win the next election. That's gotta be the worst strategy I've ever heard. Republicans winning the next election is not nearly as important as stopping this law, which we know is gonna hurt people, it's gonna hurt our country over the long term. All you have to do is go to London and talk to people there about their health plan and what it does to the culture, what it does to them politically, and the deterioration of quality of healthcare. And so, to let that happen to America because it might favor a particular party is disgusting to me. This is about our country and saving it from the really destructive consequences of the law. It is very apparent, I mean, people who wrote the bill call it a train wreck. I mean, no one's even saying it's a good bill anymore. And it's just, what they want, as Harry Reid said a couple of weeks ago, is they know it's gonna fall apart, and then they'll declare, "We need a single payer system." That's the whole idea here. A single payer system would create the largest employer in the whole world for that healthcare system. Britain already has the third-largest employer in their healthcare system. They can't control it, and they can't afford it.
The President in his press office before he went on vacation, he was pretty, pretty horrible looking, saying, "I'm gonna put out a replacement plan." You know, they don't care about it, and people don't get it. I'm sure, you know, what's your response to that?
I know, I am just a lot of replacement plans. Our goal as conservatives is that every American will have access to a health plan that they can afford and own and keep. And there's some things that we can do that are relatively easy to make that type of health plan more accessible. We've introduced it individually in these packages. If you give individuals the same tax treatment as employers, it immediately becomes easier. If you let individuals shop across state lines for health insurance, you have a more competitive market, lower prices. If you allow small businesses and organizations and churches to come together to pool their employees for health plans, all these things we've tried to pass over the last several years. Democrats have always blocked them because they wanted socialized medicine. They did not want the system to work better. But we know, and Heritage has this package, which we'll reintroduce again in September, that is a complete alternative. But the idea that you have to have a comprehensive plan that fixes everything in one bill is the foolishness of Obamacare. And what we need to do is to do it in a step-by-step way so people can understand what we're doing and fix the best healthcare system in the world rather than try to implement something that's gonna destroy it.
Congressman Walnack, who represents this area of the Toronto's campaign, is opposing Obamacare appeal. He told me last week, and said that he was against the defund strategy because he said it would likely lead to a government shutdown, which would quote be "political suicide" for the GOP. I know, cameras kind of already asked him for that. Do you have a response to that?
Yeah, I do. The people who are saying it's political suicide are the same guys who handled the 2012 election, the Republicans. And they were saying the whole time, "Don't do anything, don't be the issue, make Obama the issue, and we'll win." And you see how that worked out for us. What we find, as we travel around the country, and I've probably been in forty-five or fifty cities in the last six months, is people expect, the folks they elect, to stand up for what they say they're gonna do in Washington, for somebody who's representing this area to say they're against Obamacare, yet they're gonna vote to fund it. That's the kind of thing people are tired of.
I think for Arkansas, curious to know what your thoughts are on the Medicaid plan that they passed. It's pretty unique, it was supposed to be a compromise between Republicans and Democrats. I'm sure you guys are gonna hate it, but I'd like to know what your thought is on that.
Well, it still puts Arkansas in the grasp of the federal government. We're completely dependent on the funding. And just like they've done with Medicaid, where they bring the states out as stakeholders, the federal government writes all the rules. And once you get all these people on the Medicaid, you're not gonna be able to get them off. If the federal funding dries up, and it will, the worst part of it is Medicaid does not pay doctors enough to see patients. And you'll see in rural Arkansas, as we've seen in rural South Carolina, is they're gonna close their practices to Medicaid patients. You can't make a living as a doctor when you've got over sixty percent of your patients Medicare or Medicaid. So the best doctors are gonna go to places like Texas that don't have an exchange and are trying to maintain a private market. You'll have a physician shortage, and I'd like it that you've given you a bus ticket when there are no buses. You may have a Medicaid plan, but you're not gonna have a doctor that sees you.
Last question.
Thank you all.
Hey, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Welcome to the Heritage Action Fayetteville Defund Town Hall. My name is Russ Vogt. I'm the political director for Heritage Action. And on behalf of the whole team, we're enthusiastic that you're here, that you came out on a Monday night. I think school started today. We're glad that you're here to learn more about defunding Obamacare, what it is, how to do it, and what you can do to help with us. So thank you for being here. One of the things that you're gonna hear a lot about from us is congressional accountability. And what we mean by that is three words: know, grow, and go. We need more informed citizens who know the issues, who grow their networks and their skill sets to get the conservative message out, and go out and lead in their local community. That amplifies what we do in Washington DC. For those people who do that, we call them sentinels. And we want to partner with more sentinels. And if you're doing that already, we wanna work with you. One of the sentinels that we want to bring up to the stage is someone from Fayetteville, Arkansas. He is in charge of Maynard Manufacturing. He's gone around the state in Kansas in trying to recruit small businesses who are conservative to get the word out. He is a father, he is a husband, and he is Joe Maynard, Sentinel from Fayetteville, Arkansas. He's gonna come up and do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
But we would also be remiss if we also didn't bless the evening with some prayer. For those of you who don't know him, Mr. Rafael Cruz came to this country in 1957, from the country of Cuba, where he was oppressed and where he fled. He made a life for himself in Texas. He became a pastor and preacher, and as of right now, he has a ministry across the country and into Latin America, encouraging pastors to use their pulpit to get conservative message out. We're excited that he is here. You may also know that he has a son named Ted, who got himself elected to the United States. I haven't been able to tell, but I think he's doing a pretty good job. Please, give a warm welcome to Mr. Rafael Cruz.
Let us pray. Our Father, we bless you, Father. We thank you so much for your grace and your goodness and your mercy. We thank you for the privilege of being Americans, Father, for living in this land that you have blessed so much. And Father, we have to remind ourselves that this country was founded by people seeking the freedom to worship you, freedom that is under attack today. But Father, Lord God, I know that your hand is still upon us. Father, I thank you for Heritage Foundation and Heritage Action, Jim DeMint, and all of these men of God that have taken the responsibility and have laid their lives on the line, Father, to make sure that this country continues to be that shining city on a hill, Father. Lord God, where we can worship and honor you, Father. I pray, Lord God, that as we listen to these speakers today, Father, that we realize, Father, that you're calling us to stand in the gap, that you're calling us to stand for righteousness. Father, your word says in Proverbs 29:2, "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; when the wicked rule, people mourn." And Father, there has been a lot of mourning in America in the last few years. But Lord God, I'm reminded of another scripture where you say, "Weeping may endure for a night, but joy cometh in the morning." And Father, I know that if all of us would join hands and move forward, shoulder to shoulder, to fight for liberty and the Constitution and limited government, and that you may be exalted above all, Father, I know that this country will be restored for my greatness. We submit our lives unto you, Father. You look forward, Father, with expectation to what you're going to do in our midst, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
We've got a jam-packed agenda, so I wanna get to it. Our first featured guest is the leader of Heritage Action for America. His name is Mike Needham. For those of you who don't know, he started out as Ed Folner's Chief of Staff. He led our Asian Policy Center. What I like to say is he has a brilliant mind and a street fighter's gut. Please, if you'll join me in welcoming Mike Needham to the stage. Thank you.
My wife says something different about my gut, but I like Russ's expression. Thank you all for being here today. You know, I know a lot of us have things that we could be doing tonight. We could be at home with our friends and our family. We could be thinking about our jobs. We think about our fate. We'd all like to be watching a football game. But we're here because we're concerned about the future of our country. We're concerned about the future of freedom. And because of that, we decided that instead of sitting at home by ourselves and screaming at the TV, we'd come together. And that 200 of us, together in one room, have the power to change the course of this nation's history. And it's not just the 200 of us in this room right now. And it's not just the many thousands that we'll be with over the course of the next two weeks in other cities across the country. All around the country, people like us who are concerned about the future of our country are coming together, they're standing up, and they're saying, "We've had enough, and that we need to change course." And I am convicted that all of you who came out tonight will play a critical role in saving this country for our future. And it will be you, because let me assure you, it'll not be politicians in Washington who are the leaders in this charge. Right now in Washington, and especially in the media, there are a lot of people who say that our commitment to principle is the reason that nothing gets done in Washington. And you kind of shake your head, and it's astounding. They say, "Nothing gets done in Washington." Ladies and gentlemen, in the last 12 years, Washington DC has passed no child left behind, which was updated by President Obama with his Common Core. It's passed Medicare Part D. It's passed McCain-Fingold campaign finance reform. We've had Sarbanes-Oxley, which was later updated with Dodd-Frank. And of course, we've had Obamacare. These are monumentally large, transformational pieces of legislation that have all happened in 12 years, and we're told that Washington DC doesn't work. Friends, Washington DC is not broken. Washington DC is a finely tuned machine that is aimed at growing government, taking away our liberties, and making sure those who are well-connected get advantages. But I didn't come to depress you. And when people like you all get together in a room, get together in a bar here in Arkansas, and say, "We're gonna change the course of history," it happens. Six months ago, we were told that there was no way we could stop universal background checks from happening in Washington DC. Conservative senators had signed off on it. It had eighty votes in the Senate. It was never going to be stopped until people like you rose up and said, "We're against this." And within weeks, in two weeks, that bill was defeated. Earlier this year, we were told that there was no way that a trillion-dollar farm bill would be stopped. We were told, the smart people in Washington said that it has been 50 years since a farm bill was put on the floor of the House of Representatives, and it wasn't passed. But the information went all the way around the country that this wasn't a farm bill, it was eighty percent food stamps. It was an $800 billion food stamp bill, and you all stopped it. And so the smart people in Washington will tell us that there is no way we can reform our tax codes, that we have one fair, flat tax. They will say there is no way that we can reform the education system, that parents are empowered with decisions about their children. Right now, they are saying there is no way we can defund Obamacare. Friends, yes, we can. Now let me give you a sense of what you'll hear from members of Congress as you leave this hall and you go and ask them tough questions. They'll say it's not technically possible to defund Obamacare. Some of them say it's mandatory spending, and that can't be done on a continuing resolution. And you'll say to them, "That's not true." Every appropriations bill that passes has what's called CHIPS, Changes in Mandatory Program Spending. And we can do that here. They'll say, "Well, the President will never go for it. We only have one, control of one House of Congress." You'll say, "But the Constitution gave that one House of Congress the power of the purse." Some of them will say, "Well, we can never win an argument with this President. He has the bully pulpit." Yet the fact of the matter is, whenever we actually pick the fight, whenever we have the courage of our convictions, rather than talking ourselves out of fighting, we win. We won on the stimulus. We won on cash for clunkers. We defeated him on cap and trade. Essentially, on Obamacare, we won the intellectual fight. We won the fight for the hearts and minds of the American people who are still overwhelmingly against this law, even as unfortunately, we lost the legislative fight. Finally, some of them will say, "Well, let's just wait. If we wait two or three years, we'll have a better Congress. Maybe we'll have control of the presidency. And let's let the subsidies phase in. Let's let people get addicted, because then we'll get it." And this is the same thing we heard when we were told, "Let's just wait for the Supreme Court to save us." Let's wait for a presidential election in which Obamacare was barely litigating to save us. Friends, the time to fight is now. The responsibility to fight is with the Congress, and we can do it from this room. Standing on stage right now, I'm just one person. I need to hear it from all of you. Can we leave this place today and go out there and reverse the course of this country?
Yes!
Yes, we can. Friends, can we go out here and hold members of Congress accountable to making the right decisions in September?
Yes!
Can we go out there and make sure that members of Congress fight for our values and not the values of special interests in Washington?
Yes!
Will we defund Obamacare this September?
Yes!
Thank you all very much, ladies and gentlemen.
I am so honored to stand with freedom-loving people here in Arkansas. Thank you for coming out. You know, sometimes I got very discouraged in Washington, and I was told so many times that something I was trying to do was impossible. A lot of those impossible things are called senators today. One of them is Ted Cruz. But that was because of people like you. And one of the things I have learned is while they are not gonna do the right thing in Washington unless they get pressure, the pressure that comes from people is what really changes things. There's nothing we can't change about America if we agree it needs to be changed. That's why it's so encouraging to us, as we work around the country, when people come out, sit together, stand together, cheer together, and remind each other, "This country belongs to you and not to government." And I'm glad that you're here to exercise your First Amendment privilege. We talk a lot about the freedom of speech, the freedom of religion. And that was one heck of a prayer that Mr. Cruz, that was a real prayer. But the last part of the First Amendment is that Congress will make no law to abridge the right of the people to hesitantly assemble to bring to government a redress of their grievances. And boy, do we have a grievance tonight, though. Redress, you know, means to rectify an undesirable and unfair situation. And that's what we're gonna do with Obamacare. Obamacare is not only undesirable and unfair, it's unaffordable, it's unworkable, it's very unpopular. And we need to petition the Congress to not to fund that terrible law when they get back in September. That's why we're here tonight, to do that. And folks, the reason we're here at this time, and you know it, you elected a Republican Congress in 2010 with the promise that they would go and do everything they could to stop Obamacare, in addition to bailouts and some other things that were going on. There's probably not one Republican in the House or the Senate who hadn't looked at their constituents and said, "I'm gonna do everything I can to stop Obamacare." Now, they've done some symbolic votes to repeal Obamacare. But the real act of courage is if they get back in September and they pass a bill that funds all operations of the government except Obamacare. And it's an urgent time. You know that October 1st, they start signing Americans up. That's when they'll start to figure out what's really going wrong. We've already heard it. The Fayetteville Public Schools have announced that they're gonna contract out the substitute teachers. They're gonna reduce their hours, so none of them get over 30. But that's happening, tens of thousands, probably millions of places all over the country. Hundreds of employers that I've talked to, they're trying to figure out ways to keep their employee count down, to move people to part-time. By the time people figure out how this is hurting them, the law will be so entrenched, it's gonna be hard to stop it. Because people will start losing their employer insurance, and it's gonna be hard to go back. They'll be moved on to Medicaid plans. They won't know until this time next year that not many doctors want new Medicaid patients. It's like having a bus ticket with no buses coming by. They're gonna have a plan, but they're not gonna have doctors to see it. This may be the last best chance we have to stop this bill. So the talk needs to be over. The President says it's the law, and we need to go ahead, but he's not following the law.
The President says it's the law, and we need to go ahead, but he's not following the law. You can bet your life he's not going to be in one of these exchanges for a health plan. Congress doesn't want to be under it. They've asked for a waiver. They've got a special treatment now so they can get a little extra money, even at their salary ranges. Federal employees aren't on it. Employers have been given a one-year delay. What's going to happen is Americans are going to look up in January and realize it's a rank-and-file Americans, ordinary Americans, who got stuck with the bill. A lot of young people who voted for Obama are going to realize they're having to buy health plans that are much more expensive so it can help pay for my healthcare. But folks, we don't want this to happen. We hear the experts now in Washington, the same experts that helped the Republicans in 2012. Do you know how well that turned out? You know, what they were telling us, and I was in the Senate at the time, is, "Don't do anything. Don't be the issue. Don't take any risk. Make Obama the issue, and then we'll win." We found out that didn't inspire anybody. The conservatives didn't come out and vote. And they're just telling us the same thing again. Listen to what they're saying. They're saying, "Let this bill be implemented, because it's going to be so devastating. Americans will see what a mess it is. Then it'll help Republicans win the next election." So they're going to do something bad for our country so they might have a chance to win the next election? We don't need anybody to do that. And it's, you know, there's a risk they might lose the debate with President Obama. But since when do Americans not fight for what's right, because they might lose? Is that what we're about?
No!
I mean, what I hear more than anything else in the country is not, "Thanks for winning." Because Americans don't expect you to win when you walk into the battle with a heavenly cause but don't have the troops with you. They just say, "Thanks for fighting." They just want someone in Washington who's going to stand up for what they said they were going to do in their campaign and not say, "Well, I'll vote to repeal it, but I'm going to fund it." If you've got folks like that here, I suggest maybe you give them a piece of your mind. The power to save this country is in your hands. And we're traveling around the country because we just, we know if people are reminded of how important this is, if they're reminded of what the folks in Britain will tell you, and I was there just a month ago, they said, "They can't believe that a country that was established on freedom would fall for this national healthcare plan like they've got there." It's the third-largest employer in the whole world, and Britain's small compared to us. Folks, we don't want to go down this road, and we have the power to change it. I can guarantee you, if the folks in Congress hear the voices of the American people, that they'll respond. And I think there are people in both parties who will. But we just need to know that this is important. Tell our neighbors, "And this bill is destructive." Folks, you know it's going to raise the cost of health insurance. You know a lot of people are going to lose the healthcare that they were promised that they could keep. But we can fix the system that we've got. We've got lots of plans we'll be talking about in September to save the best healthcare system in the world, rather than to make it like some of the worst. But your being here encourages us, and I know it encourages everyone here, to see the crowd come, to take back their country. So thank you, and we look forward to your questions in just a minute. To whom? Got quite a stat here. Mike, why don't you take the first one? How can we get more members to sign the Meadows Letter? And what the Meadows Letter is, a pledge by a member of Congress to say that they won't vote for a continuing resolution that funds Obamacare.
Yeah, this is where, this is where the activism that we've talked about, the energy that's in this room, comes to play. We need to go out right now and ask Steve Womack, "Have you signed the Meadows Letter? Are you on board with the defund effort?"
No.
No, he was asked in town hall last week, and I think he was pretty clear. And the only way he'll change his mind is if he hears the enthusiasm that's in this room right now.
Yes.
As the Senator was saying, if he knows that his constituents are smart enough to ask the second question, he'll change his mind. This is one of the ways that we defeated the gun bill. Washington loves to throw out what we call shiny objects. They say, "We're against the assault weapons ban. Under no circumstance, why vote for an assault weapons ban?" While they all know that universal background check is the real threat. And if you all get smart enough, if you all know the inner good issue, you all come to our website at heritageaction.com to find out what those tough questions are, right now being the Meadows Letter, and keep asking until you get the answer that you want, they will change. I've seen them all do it. And I'm very confident that by the end of this summer, with all of your enthusiasm, with all of your activism, Steve Womack and many others in Arkansas will be, I think Tim Griffin also hasn't signed the letter, will be very enthusiastic about getting onto a defund effort.
Senator DeMint, what's the point of voting to defund Obamacare when we know that President Obama won't sign it?
Well, we don't know that, do we? The government is funded by this continuing resolution. This is part of Washington speak. The reason it's continuing resolution is they have not passed the annual spending bills as they're required by law to do. So this is a temporary funding bill, which will probably go from October through December. But the way this starts in the House, and we do it all the time, is you have a funding bill, but you disallow any funds to be used for particular things. The Hyde Amendment was such an amendment to an appropriation bill that disallowed any funding to be used for abortion. And that basically shuts it down. So that's really where we are if the House passes it, and then we take the case to the American people, they take the case to the American people, that the government is funded. If the President chooses to shut the government down, he's the one shutting the government down. Now, there is certainly a risk. Folks, I believe the President's popularity is as low as it's been. The popularity of this bill is bad, and it's getting worse. If Republicans can't win an argument with the American people based on the truth, which we funded the government but not Obamacare, if that's the truth and the President ignores it, I think we can win that argument. And the damage to our country for a slowdown, which is all it is, they'll tell you, "You'll lose your Social Security or Medicare. That's off-budget. It won't be effective. Essential functions will continue." It'll be a government slowdown. The risk of that is so much less than the risk to our country if we implement Obamacare. And so I'm not interested, as interested in the political future as the folks who think they might lose a showdown with the President. What we need is some people to stand up with the courage of their convictions, to do what they promised when they ran for election, and fight to stop Obamacare. The only weapon they have is the funding, but that is the strongest weapon in the Congress.
Mike, you covered this in your remarks, but I think you should hit the question again. Why do some claim that Obamacare spending is quote "mandatory" and thus cannot be stopped? What is the true story?
Yeah, there's two main lies that are being propagated right now by those who don't want to defund it. One of them is that a shutdown will not stop Obamacare. And that's absolutely right. We're not arguing for a shutdown. We're arguing to fund the government with defunding. As the Senator mentioned earlier, Social Security doesn't get shut down. Medicare doesn't get shut down, because those are off-budget entitlement programs. Similarly, Obamacare is off-budget entitlement program. And so that's one of the ways they try to confuse the issue. The second is the claim that you can't use mandatory, you can't turn mandatory spending off in a CR, which again, is just absolutely false. Since 1976, every single year, appropriations rider, known as the Hyde Amendment, has been passed on appropriations bills that say, "No funds may be used for abortion out of Medicaid, which is mandatory spending." And similarly, what we're suggesting here on this CR is that a rider be put on that says, "No funds shall be used for the next year on Obamacare." And so it's the same thing that's been done since 1976, it was done in 1982 by Democrats in the Congress, and been done in every single appropriations bill, as I mentioned, with changes in mandatory program spending. So anybody who tells you, "You can't do this," is somebody who doesn't want to do this. And what we're asking for is courage, not excuses.
Senator DeMint, do you support term limits for Congress and the Senate?
I do. I think it's one of the most important reforms that we can have. I limited myself to six years in the House. I kept that pledge, and I limited myself to eight years in the Senate. And so really, this idea that you have to stay a long time to know what you're doing, if that were true, the country would be in a lot better shape than it is today. I can guarantee you that if we could throw everyone out of the Congress and replace them with the people in the room tonight, our country would run a lot better than today.
Russ, there's a lot of people who say that if you had term limits, you'd guarantee yourself mediocrity in Congress. And I think at this point, we take mediocrity.
Mike, are there ways that we could get around Obamacare if we can't defund it?
No, defund is the fight right now. And if not, the fight will continue, and we'll find future opportunities, but it gets exponentially harder. The moment that these subsidies start going out on January 1, and people start getting used to that addicting money that's flowing out of Washington DC to them, it'll be much tougher to have the types of common sense reforms. And look, we would be the first people to agree that we need healthcare reform in this country. There are serious problems. Healthcare is tough to, it's not affordable. You get stuck in a job that you can't leave because you need your health insurance. There's all sorts of problems that need to be addressed with our healthcare system. But the first thing that needs to happen is this large 2,400-page bill and the tens of thousands of regulations that came along with it needs to be rooted out. And if we don't stop the subsidies from flowing this year, our task got a whole lot harder. And so this is the last time we have before it starts, before October 1. And now's not the time for contingent planning about what happens after this fight. Now is the time for the courage of taking advantage of this opportunity.
Senator, are the congressional aides and staff exempt from healthcare that I have to have?
They were written, it was written in the law that they had to go under the same plan that Americans do. But the President's administration just gave them a special waiver that they could continue to take the funding that comes from the government to pay for their plan into the exchanges, which is illegal. I mean, it's not in the law. So the President has on a number of occasions, and this is one of them, basically ignored the law and by fiat changed it. And you know, my opinion is, okay, we're going to go ahead with this, saying either everyone should live under it or no one should.
I think this is a great question that hits on many that are in the stack. "We are charged by Christ to care for the least of our brother. How does defunding Obamacare do that?"
If you believe that the best way to care for your brother is to let the federal government do it, folks, that's not compassion at all. If you believe that they're going to get better health care than they would have under the current system, you don't know how Washington works. It's going to be so rough with corruption and fraud. It's already got winners and losers. The President has given some big unions some waivers, but he's not giving a lot of you or a lot of your children waivers. If I believed that this was the best way to care for poor, I would support it. But the best way to care for the poor is the way it's always been, with people closest to you, if not your family, your community, the church, the state. The last resort should be the federal government, because we found that even we make healthcare free, on Medicaid, for instance, the people who don't have any health insurance at all are healthier than those who are on Medicaid. The way this is set up does not help poor people, just as welfare does not help poor people. It traps them into dependency, robs them of their dignity. We're not helping people by getting the federal government to do it. I believe we should help them as individuals and as communities, and that should be on every person's heart. But if you turn it over to the federal government, you're not helping them.
Mike, there are many things that are happening allegedly unconstitutional. Why aren't they being stopped? How can they be challenged?
This fundamentally gets at the lack of courage in Washington. I mean, I remember two years ago, the President made some illegal recess appointments for the NFIB. And a whole bunch of people were outraged. Every Republican went out and said they were outraged, but only one person stood up and said he was going to do something about it, and that was Senator Mike Lee from Utah. He said, "I am not going to vote for a single nominee that this President puts forward until we resolve this, because this is a constitutional crisis. We have a system set up for how nominations get made. The President has decided he will not abide by it. That is a constitutional crisis." And Senator Lee wanted to fulfill his oath to the Constitution, which the President, Senators, Supreme Court justices, everybody takes. Last time, six people, including Senator DeMint, followed him, and every other Republican turned the other way and left Senator Lee on the plane. And so friends, we know you're out here. The country is out there dying to support somebody with courage, and they are too afraid to trust you to be there for them. I was there, I was talking to a senior congressional aide a couple of weeks ago, and he said, "Mike, you guys are being unrealistic. We can't possibly inspire the country from Congress, because our approval level is only 12%." And I said to him, he looked like I was telling him for the first time that the world was round. When I said, "Maybe the reason your approval rating is 12% is you never tried to inspire The President, Nancy Pelosi, they believe this stuff. They are really in for it. Every single Republican nominee, since Ronald Reagan, with the exception of John McCain, opposed Ronald Reagan in 1980. George H.W. Bush ran against him. Bob Dole ran against him. George W. Bush supported his father, and Mitt Romney was a Democrat at the time of Reagan Bush. Friends, our opponents, the left, believes this stuff. And we need more people like Mike Lee and Jim DeMint and Ted Cruz who believe our stuff, who believe in the founding principles of democracy.
Senator, what is being proposed to replace Obamacare?
Glad you asked. Our goal as conservatives is that every American has access to a health plan that they can afford and own and keep. Keep from job to job, keep into retirement. And we can do that if we help individuals have the same advantages as an employer does. If you gave the same tax treatment, insurance would immediately cost less. If you let individuals buy health insurance anywhere in the country, rather than just here in Washington. See, in almost every state, you've got one or two insurance companies that kind of monopolize the market, run the prices up, tell physicians what they'll pay them. But why not let small businesses and associations or churches, brokerage, let them come together and pool all their employees or members in, on their health insurance? But like, they won't let small businesses do that. They won't give individuals the same tax breaks. And there are ways we can work with the states to help those who have pre-existing conditions get insurance. But if you make it easier for young people when they're healthy to buy a health plan, then you won't have to worry if they get sick when they're 30 or 40 years old that they don't have insurance. We can create a system where folks can have whole life policies, and that you don't have to lose it every time you change jobs. Employers can help pay for it. Family can help pay for it. But they don't even do the simple things now. If you have a health savings account that you put your own money in, tax-free, they won't let you use that to pay for health insurance policy. They've done everything they can to make it almost impossible for individuals to own their own insurance. And so they say, "Okay, we need a single payer system." Folks, we've got the best healthcare system in the world. We need to make it better, rather than replace it with what we know is not a good healthcare
Let's draw on your time in the Senate a little bit. Whenever there's a group of senators, usually called a gang of, often with some of the biggest cabers in the Republican Party, how do they go about getting on there, and what is the impact of these gangs?
I was never privileged to be in a gang. Well, the balance is so close that if you can get four or five Dems and Republicans, they know, they can swing it one way or another. And so if they can all agree, they can generally get something passed. But in order to do that, you have to go to the Democratic side. I have never seen a compromise that came to our side of the legislature. So folks, I don't think compromise and get along and work together, you have to realize that's like a coach telling their football team, "Go out and work with the other guys." The fact is that we've got two opposite goals. One is towards socialism, collectivism, wherever the progressives are trying to take us. The other is a country of freedom and opportunity and prosperity, and it's hard to compromise with that. And so we found, almost every occasion, if you work... And so we found, almost every occasion, if you work with, if you work with a Democrat, the only thing you can get out of that was more spending and a bigger government. Did you, did you ever see a compromise where they actually cut spending? The sequester, for instance. Everybody thought that was terrible. But you know what the sequester is? Over the next 10 years, we're only gonna grow spending 67% instead of what was planned at 69%. And that's what the president is going around the country talking about, is these devastating cuts. Now, I admit, they cut too much out of the military, and that is hurting us. We've never cut spending since I've been there 15 years.
Mike, would you sponsor and push legislation that requires all Americans to come under Obamacare? No exemptions, no special treatments. And I just want to judge the intent of the question, assuming Obamacare is on the books, would that be your sponsor?
Well, I guarantee you that Congress wouldn't accept that. President Obama wouldn't accept that. I'd be interested in what Max Vawkes, Democrat from Montana, who called Obamacare a train wreck. Washington DC is fundamentally about how individuals who are empowered in this country can use the levers of power to advantage themselves at the expense of others. And that's fundamentally not what's being brought out. This country did, as you all know, this country was founded on people who said that we were given certain rights by God, and we're gonna create a government to protect those rights. And in the quintessential moment to understand the progressive left, it was a speech that Woodrow Wilson gave 100 years ago. And he said, "The only problem with the Declaration of Independence was the preamble. The part that said, 'We hold these truths, we self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they're endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights amongst the delight of liberty and the pursuit of happiness.'" He said, "The reason was because that defined government as something that merely existed to protect rights rather than solve problems." And so if the Declaration of Independence, according to the progressive left, had just been a list of 27 grievances, they could work with that. There were grievances in 1776, there were grievances in 1912, and there's grievances today. But that's not what government is about, that's not the purpose of government. And so that's, there is a war going on between progressives and the American founding. And that's why it's important that all of us are out here in this fight and speaking together to make sure that our side wins.
Senator, why does immigration reform do nothing for legal immigrants waiting outside of the US?
That's one of the frustrations, is my offices over the years have worked with thousands of folks who were trying to come to America the right way, the legal way. Coming to work, and my families are sponsors here. We make it so hard for them. Some of them waited over 10 years, have to pay tens of thousands of dollars in legal expenses. And we make it hard to come to America the legal way. The problem with illegal immigration is those who have come here legally and are working is they're likely to have a diminished quality of life, less pay, less jobs. And the whole idea of immigration and immigration reform should be to benefit Americans, those who are nationalized Americans as well as native-born Americans. That's what we're trying to do at Heritage, recognize that we need reform. It needs to be step by step so Americans know what they're getting. Are they really getting border control? Are they really getting an ID system where our small business would know who's legal and who's not? Would we have a guest worker program that works for our farmers and our hospitality industry? Make the things that need to work, work. But the first thing and the only thing that the other side wants is just citizenship for those who came here illegally. If we do that again after what we did in 87, then the whole immigration system in America will be presumed to be periodic amnesty. And folks, that isn't gonna help anybody in this room, it isn't gonna help the folks who came here for freedom and opportunity.
Mike, I see the Republican and Republican Party imploding before my eyes. What can be done to stop it?
Well, despite some of the tenor remarks, I'm actually very optimistic about the Republican Party. I mentioned earlier that there hasn't been a single Republican nominee since Ronald Reagan, who supported Ronald Reagan in 1980. And Mr. Cruz, you can correct me if I'm at this wrong, but I think Ted is 42 years old, which would have made him Ted when Ronald Reagan was elected. And I think that you have an entire generation of Republican leaders that we have never seen in the last 30 years who actually believe what you and I believe. And Ted Cruz, and Rand Paul, and Mike Lee, and Scott Walker, all of these great conservatives around the country, who all have very different flavors of their conservatism, actually believe in Ronald Reagan's belief that America is the world's last best hope for mankind. And so I'm very optimistic, even as we have these difficult times as a party, and we have certain people who talk the talk, who walk the walk, and need to hear from you, that ultimately this party is going to be saved by a generation of people who were inspired by Ronald Reagan and will now come to power and govern like Ronald Reagan. And it took 25 years after FDR passed away for LBJ to come around and finish what he'd started. And it's gonna take 25 years after Ronald Reagan for us to finish the path that he put this country on. But I'm very optimistic, and it's very difficult to listen to Ted Cruz speak and not be inspired by the future of the Republican Party.
We all need to know what keeps Ted going, and I know he'll tell you this, and I'm sure it's Deadwood too, and Mike Lee. Well, Washington's cutting these guys up, cutting their legs off. People from both parties, telling them they're wrong, they're stupid. But when they hear that there were people roaring when their names were mentioned in Fayetteville, Arkansas, that keeps them in the fight. That reminds them that they're standing up for freedom-loving Americans, and that keeps them going. And so the power you have to take these new leaders and give them that push is really what this is all about. It only takes a few people with you behind them, and then suddenly they're changing Washington.
This question is close to your heart, I know, Senator DeMint. How do you get the message and the seriousness of what's happening in DC if we don't defund Obamacare inside the church? Too many people inside the church don't believe.
Well, I know people are busy and going about their lives, and politics is so negative. They don't like to think about it sometimes. But you know, freedom is only ours if we're vigilant. Like Reagan said, it doesn't come in the bloodstream. It really has to be passed one generation to the next with a lot of courage and work and sacrifice. That's what we're trying to get across here, is Washington is not gonna solve the problems, not gonna save our country. They are the problem. But like Hayek said, when a friend of his asked if he should run for office, Hayek said, "Politicians are just quarks bobbing on the water. But you can direct the current. And believe me, if you keep the current going in the direction, good people as well as those who are not so good are gonna follow the current." That's what we're trying to create around the country. That's what you're doing here tonight, is creating some rapids for your senators in Congress when they have to pay attention when this few people come together in one place.
What's the biggest issue facing the nation today, and what is Heritage Foundation doing to address that issue?
I wanna answer that first, that's an easy one.
I think it's Obamacare. And that's what we're here, and it's not what we're doing, it's what you all are doing. The biggest issue, Ronald Reagan told us that socialism would come to America through the healthcare system. And that's what we're seeing going on right now, and that's why this fight is so critical, and that's why your presence here tonight is so critical.
Yeah, I mean, it's, healthcare in total is nearly a fifth of our total economy. And that comes on the heels of Dot Frame essentially taking over the finance and credit aspect, as well as our mortgage system, which is our housing. And you look at all the areas the federal government is controlling now, this concept of federalism in a Republican form of government is at risk. If the power moves to Washington for all of our healthcare, then the laboratories of democracy at the state level are really damaged. So this is more serious than just the quality of our healthcare. This is about our country, our culture, our economy, our whole political system. So there is no issue more important than, folks have told me in the last couple, "You gotta give up on Obamacare." And I say, "That's giving up on America. I'm not giving up on Obamacare."
Our president seems to take every opportunity to divide this country further. How can we get over this us-against-them mentality and get every politician working on what's best for this country instead of worrying about the next election?
You know, the divisions seem to almost be made up when they're not even needed. It's just really frustrating to see how the president is dividing our country. But part of this division comes from the centralization of power. When you have Washington making the decisions for everybody, for every state, it's inevitably gonna divide people. And that's why the framers of the Constitution wanted it to be so limited, because if you make a decision for everyone in Washington, you're gonna alienate half the country. And if you make 10 decisions, you're gonna have almost everybody alienated. But if you move it back to the states, the communities, the families, where decisions are from the ground up, then there's a lot more unity and diversity at the same time. People can make different decisions about their own lives, and it doesn't force that decision on someone else. So the president, I think, has been very divisive in his tone and what he's said, but also by centralizing power and trying to create one-size-fits-all solutions, when that's not what America's about. I mean, we wanna sit next to somebody who believes totally differently than us, and we love them, and they're friends, but we have the right to do different things and value different things in our life. And that's what we're trying to protect, not just in healthcare, but all aspects of our lives.
Thank you for your question. Thanks, everybody. We have a call to action from Mr. Rafael Cruz. We have saved the best for the last. We're gonna go offstage and have Mr. Cruz come on up, and he will give one more call to action before we adjourn the evening. So thank you.
Well, praise God, or may it like Senator Jim DeMint. And Heritage Foundation. I'll tell you, I was reminded as I was listening to Senator DeMint speak, that in the Declaration of Independence, it says that the government derives its powers from the consent of the governed. If we are the governed, we can deny them the consent. You know, I know from personal experience what it is to feel the heavy boot of a centralized government over my neck, and to see my freedoms being eroded away more and more and more, to see the attacks on large and small businesses, to see attack on freedom of religion, on freedom of the press, on freedom of expression, and to see socialism just move across all areas. And I'll tell you, it's something very interesting if you look at Cuba. Before Castro, Cuba had one of the wealthiest economies in all of Latin America. Did you know it had the eighth per capita income highest in the world? Was the only country in Latin America that had a 1:1 exchange with the US dollar. Today, the average salary in Cuba is $14 a month. And I saw socialized medicine, not only in Cuba, but you look around the world, all the countries that have socialized medicine, what has happened? Decreased care, waiting periods of 12 to 18 months, or even denied care because you have managed care, rationed care. And of course, the wealthy, as long as they have another country where they can go get their healthcare, they do that. And we've had over the last years, we've had lots of Canadians coming across the border because it takes 18 months to get a new operation in Canada. Do we want that?
No.
Well, that is part of what Obamacare has for us. And of course, something else happens. And it happened in Cuba. Because doctors cannot make any money on their socialized medicine, there was an exodus of thousands upon thousands of doctors that left Cuba, and now they're practicing in this country. And the same thing is gonna happen. Now, you know, the thing that makes it much more difficult is something that I used to tell my son. And I would ask him and say, "You know, Ted, when I lost my freedom in Cuba, I had a place to come to, the greatest country upon the face of the earth." But if we lose our freedoms here, where are we going to go? There is no place to go. We have to draw a line in the sand. And I'll tell you, Senator DeMint was so eloquent about the ails of Obamacare. This is really a train wreck, as Senator Vawkes said. It is something that will destroy this country. And the people that are going to be hurt the most are the ones that they say they're trying to help. Like the youth, the workers that are just starting out, maybe on minimum wage, working for McDonald's or whatever. Because a lot of those are going to see their, now their hours restricted to 29 hours so they can get away from paying a penalty. The elderly, they're gonna see rationed care. That's why I'm so excited about Heritage Action and the Sentinel Program. And I want to encourage each and every one of you to sign up to be a Sentinel. And I'll tell you, you can be assured, they will train you, they have their skills clinics that will tell you exactly how to be an effective grassroots activist. They have coaching programs, they have conference calls on a weekly basis that just make you effective in keeping Congress accountable. I'll tell you, politicians would listen to we the people if we the people speak. I'll tell you, right now, there is a website called Don'tFundIt.com. The O-N-T, not apostrophe, Don'tFundIt.com. Right now, there are 350,000 signatures on that website. If we can get a million-plus signatures on that website before September 30, I guarantee you, the people on the Hill are gonna be shaking in their boots. I encourage you, each and every one of you, go back to your friends, your neighbors, your neighborhood, get everyone to sign up as a Sentinel. And get every one to sign up at Don'tFundIt.com. And let's tell loud and clear to Congress and the Senate, we will not take it anymore. Unfortunately, it's politicians in both parties. And we need to hold them accountable, to we the people. This is a fight that we can win if we the people speak out. If we the people just load up their phone lines, call your congressman, call your senator, and just tell them, "Stand for truth. Stand for the Constitution. Stand for limited government. Stand for our freedoms." We need to jam their phones eight hours a day, just jam their phones, make the calls, and demand that they do the right thing. You know, Obamacare is something that the majority of these people in this country do not want. I think the last statistic, it's what, 77% of the people in this country do not want Obamacare. And I almost, I mean, the lies keep getting worse and worse. I heard Obama yesterday say, "Well, you know, when these people say they're sticking it to me, they're really sticking it to you." And I'll tell you, we got to stop drinking the Kool-Aid. Thomas Jefferson once said, "If a people expect to be ignorant and free, they expect what never was and never will be." It is our responsibility to make sure they're not ignorant. We need to open their eyes to the truth. They're being lied to, and they are just... They're being lied to, and they are just believing the lies. Now, let me tell you, there are two great ails within us as conservatives that we have to overcome. Number one is political correctness. We have to stop. Number two is apathy. Listen, we cannot sit back and wait for the next fight, acquiesce in this fight so we can fight the next one. No, 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 no. This is the time. This is the last standing. I'll tell you, if we all stand together, we can win this fight. I want to close with the last few words of the Declaration of Independence. As much as I love the Constitution, I love the Declaration even more. And in the last few words of the Declaration, it says, "Relying upon the protection of divine providence." We mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. Let me tell you, our lives are being eroded day by day by day. Our quality of life is becoming less and less as our rights and our liberties are taken away. But you know, it's like a frog. You throw a frog in a pot of hot water, that frog will jump right up. But you put that frog in a pot of cold water and put it on fire, and that water is just warming up slowly, that frog is content and stays there until you frog, you boil that frog to death. That's what's happening with us in this country. Too many of us have been like that frog. Well, it's just a little bit, just a little bit. It could never happen here like it happened in Cuba. Yes, it can. It is happening. And I'll tell you what, it is time we put a stop to it. Let me tell you, Obama has both his hands in your pocket. And he's trying to take more and more and more of your money so he can fund more of the handouts. And the money you have in your wallet is worth less every day because printing presses are going 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But I'll tell you something, there is something that they cannot take from you. They can take your life, they can take your treasure, and they are doing both, but the one thing they cannot take is your honor. I refuse to let them take my honor, and you should do that. I want to challenge you to make a pledge together with me, to make a pledge of those last few words in the Declaration, and say, not to me, but to each other, "I pledge my life, I pledge my treasure, I pledge my sacred honor to do everything I can to take this country back and restore freedom and opportunity in America." If we all believe we are going to restore that Chinese city on the Hill, God bless you, God bless America.